Sorry to interrupt. We're going to go ahead and start the meeting. If everyone would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mark, you want to start us?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kira, would you start with a roll call, please?
Lyon.
More.
Shaffer.
More.
Dylan.
More.
Massey.
More.
Ruffin.
More.
Marhaber.
More.
Carter.
More.
Carpenetti.
More.
Okay. We have a form?
Yep.
Do we have any comments from the floor about this agenda? Okay. The next is approval of the minutes for February. Do I motion a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is approval of the bills for February. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is approval of the monthly reports for city clerk, city treasurer, court clerk for February.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The first resolution we have is Resolution Number 29. This is appointment for the zoning board. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay. This is because Bianca Rico is now our codes enforcer, she will be stepping off the ZBA. And we're looking to appoint Jessica Wright, who has been working as a real estate agent for River Hills for some time. And she recently relocated to Little Falls. She's wanted to for a long time. She's renting on Main Street above Melanie Pagans location. So she's changing everything and looking for a house here. She's been working in real estate for River Hills since 2017. And she has had also short-term and long-term property development and management that she's been working on since 2015. She's been one of the people that I discovered that worked really hard to get the right kind of owners on Main Street. Very, very particular about who she shows properties to. And so she's been very successful with all the Simpson properties and others. And so I think she makes a good candidate for us. Do we have any discussion? Okay. We need a roll call on this, please.
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffin.
Yes.
Marhaber.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carpenetti.
Yes.
Okay. The next one is local law number one, the parking permits. Do I have a motion?
No.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. The parking permits, what did that go to here? Is that the different? Okay. So it's not, it's parking tickets versus permit, right?
Right.
Okay. So this instead of on your agenda, local law number one, is the parking tickets versus permits. So this is an increase in the parking fees that we charge. Most went from 15 to, or from 20 to, a couple of them from 20 to 50. Others were from 15 to 20. And looking at a comparison between Herkimer and Glover'sville and Illion, we are with handicap violations, we've been the lowest at 50. We still are at 50. Others are at 80 and 100. Snow ban, this is the one, the snow violation is the one that goes up from 20 to 50. The others from 15 to, most of the location violence or violation, time violation are both going up to 20 from 15. Registration violation from 15 to 20. Inspection violation from 15 to 20. Fire hydrant, if you park in front of it, from 15 to 50. To be close to what everybody else is doing. Any discussions?
Mayor, continue my objection to it. I think in the snow restriction overnight parking, fine increase doubling, I feel that's excessive. I don't think that, I think there's a lot of instances where people don't intentionally leave their cars out, but they may be in town for a funeral, may not know the car for being on. I think that doubling that to $50 is extreme. It's a huge jump. I don't come against that.
Anyone else?
What is the percentage for not paying for parking tickets? Does anybody know that?
We really don't know. You know, we haven't, since Mike has been...
You can raise it to $1,000 if you're paying because of that.
Well, they are paying. A lot of them are coming in. Kira's been really busy, so is Tina, with people paying their tickets. So the reason for this is compliance. It's a lack of compliance this year particularly. Last year was a problem too. We have a huge problem with people just, without moving at all, no attempt to move. Some people had six tickets on their car. So, you know, and still left it there.
Mayor, I think that, I agree that it's a problem and that they need to be held accountable. But there's means of holding them accountable without increasing that to $50. And the person that just happens to leave the car up one night out of the year, most residents don't leave their vehicles out when the parking ban's on. That won't affect them. I just think that, I don't think we're going to change the people that are currently not paying the fines, regardless of what the amount is, or continue to not pay.
Yeah.
Till there's some other action taken.
I understand what you're saying. From my perspective, we have to do something a little stronger than $20 or $30. I think we have to be very serious about this because unlike any other year, if you were to talk to DPW, the people who are working the plows, they were not complying. The fact that we had to give 211 tickets in one storm, another 150 in another storm, that's people not paying attention. So, and we do put it out everywhere when there's a parking ban. We even have an electronic sign that we're looking for a place that Rotary is going to sponsor to even people passing by. City Hall is what we're kind of looking at. They would be able to see that we have a parking ban going on. Anytime you look out and you see the weather and schools are closing and everything else and you still park in front of your house, I mean, you know, how much notice do we need to give them? This year we had, how many weeks did we have the parking ban on? A couple of weeks, which was unheard of compared to last year. So if we hit another bad storm year, next year, it's going to be the same problem. They could not get on Petrie Street at all. The buses couldn't get through because of the snowbanks. We had Moreland Street the same way, we couldn't get through. They didn't shovel their sidewalks, they didn't shovel enough to move their cars. And so they left them in the road. And so what do you do when it's emergency vehicles that can't get through? So this is a result of this. We can look at it again if in the future, if this becomes, you know, a burden for people. But it's, it's my recommendation to go forward with it at this point.
Counselor Massey, I was just going to ask, you indicated that the main one you're having trouble with is the $20 number one. Is there a number that sounds more appropriate for you?
Well, you're saying that looking at the other municipalities and what they're charging for that fine, 50 is consistent maybe with Glover'sville. Glover'sville, Glover'sville, they're considering the trust. And they have a lot of driveways and, you know, there's really no reason for people to park off the street lane. There are a lot of reasons to not. And I understand the situation and I'm going to open up, but this is not a new situation.
No.
But I've also heard a lot of their grievances and excuses, why people have had to leave their vehicle on the street. And that was back when our prosecutor would just hear that argument and just dismiss the ticket. Our prosecutor said last month, he doesn't do that, he's making it go to the court. So now you're talking about somebody gets a ticket, a $50 ticket, and in order to argue that, you're talking they've got to go to court and maybe go to a trial situation? I just, I just think that's excessive.
Well, they've changed the ticket, so on the back of it, it gives an address and where to send a letter explaining your reasoning to the court. And then the court contacts them. So yes, it's an extra step if they're trying to get out of the ticket and they feel it's justified. Also, if, you know, we had a new officer who was really putting tickets on in areas that weren't city property, when it was Valley via court. And so Chief Thomas waived those. So, I mean, he's very reasonable when it comes to that sort of thing. But I think your point about tracking and, you know, making sure that we are collecting on every one of them is important because someone with six tickets on their vehicle clearly isn't being tracked. And so we need to do that to make sure that this is effective.
You know, I think it goes back to the same point that Chief Massey was mentioning before, that's enforcement. So it'd be, I think it'd help, I think, every council member here to find out what that percentage is and what we're doing to, you know, to decrease that percentage, to see what we can do. Going forward, it's hard to be discretionary when the policeman's on the street, he doesn't know why that vehicle's not being moved. And then we're looking at streets like Arthur and even Churchill and ones in the first ward that are really thin and, man, I'll tell you, like you say, you couldn't pass a bus through them. Public safety is the number one reason why we're here. We've got to keep these buses going, we've got to keep municipal vehicles that have the ability to get down these streets. So if we can, if we can take half of those cars that were ticketed, the 200 and then the 100, we can get half of those cars off, we're going to be getting down these streets a lot easier. And that's what we're, I think that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
Right.
So I couldn't agree more with this, with this bill. And I think, you know, I'll hump it though.
The only, the thing I will say is, again, this is not new. This has been, the result changed when there was teeth to it. So when we imposed the boot law and we put the boot on vehicles and then they found out that they actually had to pay the tickets, we saw a drastic reduction in the number of vehicles left, like your situation.
Right.
But if you don't have that teeth in place, I don't care how many laws you have or how many tickets you write, they're just not going to abide by it.
Yeah. I agree with that.
But again, going forward, what I just said was, let's find out what those numbers are, let's see what we can do to get this information done so we don't...
As together.
...talk about this at the next meeting, you know what I mean? Let's see if we can get this information from Chief Thomas, who usually is pretty poor with that information, and see what we can do to get this law wrong.
Yeah, he's working on...
That's what I think we've got to do. I don't know. What do you guys think?
They abandoned the software that once was there. And so they're working on tying it into admins, I understand, so that the tickets are recorded in the treasurer's office. So that's what he was looking at the last, I talked to him, I think last week about it. So they're working on it. It's not finished yet, but it should probably have never been abandoned, but it was abandoned. So just changing personnel.
The tracking is the root of the problem. I mean, you could, raising it to 50 is great, but if you're not going to track it, is it going to increase the amount of people that say, I ain't paying that?
Well, yes.
Because so-and-so hasn't paid a parking ticket in three years, but it was $20. I'm not paying it at 50. So again, I think the root of the problem is, the people who are getting ticketed need to be held accountable.
No, I agree. I agree. I think it's two-pronged.
I feel, I only worry is that if you're charging more, but you're not policing it, are less people going to pay the ticket?
Well, the intent is to police it, right? And so this is a two-pronged approach to doing it. There's too many, and I've heard them personally too, that say $20 is nothing, I'll just leave it there, with no regard for emergency vehicles trying to get into a neighborhood. And if you're on Moreland Street and some of the other streets around there, and your mother, you called for ambulance and they can't make it through because it's impossible, you can't even get the plow through, that's what happened this year. The buses couldn't get through on Petrie. School called me in a panic because they couldn't even get the bus, they couldn't turn them around, they couldn't do anything. It took two days for DPW to clear that enough to be able to move the cars away, to get at least one lane through there.
The key here is that for years, we had a parking ban. The signs are still in all the entrances coming into the city. It says from November 1st till April, right? We always had a parking ban. There was no taking it out and taking it out, putting it out and taking it up. What happens, what the last few years has been very mild, I understand. We had a winter like this winter, the DPW is responsible for one thing, the plowed streets curb to curb. They're not responsible for your driveway, where you park. They're responsible for foul that road. And if they can't foul that road, and somebody's having a heart attack, and the ambulance can't get through that street, and it's happening, Mike, you know that, Prospect Street, oh, then... So if you had the parking ban on, and I understand that was going to be a soft, it's going to be 52 degrees tomorrow. So you have to think about it, so you wait, take the parking ban off. But in order for the DPW to, especially this winter, you have rights to send a couple trucks out with a loader, at least start cleaning the curb lines, it's a waste of time because you're going around on the cars and you're burning more fuel than what you're actually getting accomplished, with the trucks, manpower, and the loader. I know, when there's nothing worse than working on the street, you can have, you can only get half of it done because there's cars out on the street and you're doing this and that. So you have to complain, well, you're too noisy and might ruin the stuff. Well, you know what? You got to do some sometime. And you got to go when the cars are out the street. So keep the parking ban on. That's simple. Leave it on. You might get one or two stragglers leaving their car on the street and you tickle them. And they're going to learn after that. But you try to, you try to be nice and this is what happens.
Yeah. I think it's difficult to, for people in apartments, and so many of our properties have been sold and divided eight different ways into apartments, and where it was once a single-family home with one vehicle or two vehicles, now you've got eight vehicles or more. And so it, I can see if you have a couple of vehicles or one to try to move off the street, that it's a whole lot less than what some of these tenants are doing. But they need to be educated too, as to the fact that what a parking ban means. And so I think when we have mild winters, like we did last year and years before, to burden them with, you know, being off the street the whole season seems to be a little bit too much. But for a season like this, I think next year, hopefully they'll be more sensitive to the fact that...
Yeah. It might be too much when you're working behind the plow for 16 hours. It's not too much because you just, to be honest with you, like Brian Murray said, if we know there's a big storm coming, like we had three days' storm, that was a long storm, that's...
It was.
Go open up, that's part of it. And let the people come out there for a few days, get them right out of the way. Most people probably don't even go to work for a day or two before that storm. I mean, I'm talking severe, that was severe, we got hit severely. So there's an option, like you said. There is an option.
Yeah. I'm all for that. I think that's a great idea. It's, it's difficult. We live in a very strange city that is not built for this.
People are probably not going to walk out of the water, drive up and walk back to their house.
Well, we, all we can do is make it available.
Was that walking in the store?
That area, Tom, most of us have to park in that.
Correct.
Good for us. You get in the worst of different streets and stuff, there's a lot of people that know parked car buildings or whatever, and they can get one car and maybe they've got two or three, and park up there for eight or two. Now, so you just push it back and pull your own car out?
Well, and we allow parking on the grass. We allow parking like on Moreland Street with half on the sidewalk and half on. So we try to do what we can. It's not meant to be a burden to anybody, but we have to have some of the people start paying attention. Anyway, any other discussion on this?
I just wanted to verify with Alderman and Massey, is that one fine, is that the main contention of this year five?
Yeah.
The one thing I, from when I was looking at the fines, that was important to me, when I looked at the fact that we're charging $50 for, you know, preventing access to a fire hydrant, but $20 for preventing access for fire and EMS to get to the streets. It didn't seem to square. So if you're preventing access to water for the hydrant, or you're preventing access for people to move down the street in an emergency situation, that should be equal in my mind. So anyway, any other discussion? Okay. We need a roll call vote on this, please.
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
No.
Ruffin.
Yes.
Marhaber.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carp.
Yes.
Okay. The next local law is the City Hall parking lot. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion on this one? This one is pretty self-evident, I think. The resolution is from, we allow public parking in our lot from nine o'clock in the evening till six in the morning. It's all the time, but it's particularly helpful for people when we do have a snow ban. They just have to have the car removed at six o'clock. By doing this resolution, it allows PD to be able to write a ticket for somebody who leaves it there for three days and our employees can't get in. So outside of that, I mean, that's really the reason we're doing this resolution. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffin.
Yes.
Marhaber.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carp.
Yes.
Okay. Next one is Resolution Number 30, deficit financing. And do I have a motion?
No.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? I think most people know, and from the resolution, what we're looking at is the ability to move this forward to the state ultimately, a couple more views from attorneys from OCS or OSC to take a look at it. But we're essentially looking at consolidating all of our deficits, our $2.8 million deficit in, between the general fund and the Gulf Fund and also the Water Fund. And then it is also to help with, give us a little bit more time with the $500,000, close to, it's like $432,000 for the budget deficit for 2025. So we're rolling that in to give us a little bit more time because the solution to closing that gap in the budget is timber harvesting and it is selling some of our lots that are vacant lots between houses and things. And that just, it's going to take a little bit of time. So then what they will do with this is, once they have it, we are happy with it, we send it into the state, they will write a bill up and pass it through. Senator Walzick is working with us and also Assemblyman Smullen. And we're looking at hopefully a pass in May. And then we have the following year before we actually bond for it. So once it passes with the state, we can ban against it if we want to. We can pull the plug and say, you know, we're just not going to go forward, we're coming up with something else. But that approval allows us the flexibility to be able to clear the decks with that deficit that we kind of inherited for many years, and now we really need to do something with it. Okay? Any questions? Okay. Roll call vote?
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffin.
Yes.
Marhaber.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carpenetti.
Yes.
Okay. The next two resolutions kind of go together. These are resolutions to purchase a lot on 521 Garden Street and also the one right next to it, 15 North Second Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay. These are vacant lots behind Regirio's area up here, trying to place where this is. And we had a realtor, actually it was Jessica, who we just voted in to ZBA, she did a comp analysis of other lots in the area and came up with a price that looked affordable and reasonable, and that was $5,500. So we have per lot. And these are for additional parking for Ivy Gardens, and we have our developers, one of them here right now, that is looking for the additional parking spaces off-street to meet codes enforcement. So I don't know if you had a chance to look that over at all, if you had any questions?
So we're selling the whole lot for $5,500?
Yes.
How much did you pay for the lawn for, I mean, you have...
Oh, wow. There were houses on it once upon a time. The comps, if you look at her comps, she found that some toward the back there, that are some Main Street comps...
That property had a huge, funnel of parking.
They've been vacant for a while.
It's been a while.
We even looked at, Chet went out and measured. We looked at doing some kind of a city parking lot there, but didn't feel that for the cost for us, it was just the right thing to do at this moment in time. So, but her comps really showed, most of the comps were around $7,000. Some of them at different prices, but you can see the condition the lots were in. She whittled it down a little bit because of the comp that she was showing on this particular one on Main Street. 381 West Main is all flat and smooth with grass on it. So there's going to be some work to do to get them to parking lot stage. So I think it's a fair offer, so we'll see. Any questions?
Uh, Mayor.
Yes.
Does that go through the planning board for approval, city property side?
Not that I'm aware of. I think it's really a council decision from what we've been reading. We don't do many of them.
I thought I read a few years, no one charged that was in that one.
We'll check that. But I think from what Kira has pulled for me to look at, it's a council decision.
Okay. Will Ivy Gardens be needing any zoning or any changes to the lot themselves when they are ready to?
When they get ready to pave it or whatever they're going to do with it, then they'll still have to adhere to codes. And codes allow so many, the square footage of each space for a vehicle, it's all measured out and all of that. So they'll be working with Bianca on that.
Thank you.
Yes.
And over Second Street, it's a square lot around the top of the hill.
At Garden.
That house next to it, a guy came here 10 years ago, wanted to buy a piece for his, for a driveway, that alley that sits there. And we never sold him anything. I always thought we should have.
We should have.
Yeah. Not only, I sold a lot of, what room now, does anybody live in?
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't remember that. I don't even remember what it was.
It was a park, it was a park, it was a corner, I don't recall.
They've, you know, for many, many years, we've had lots throughout town that we've been sitting on. We get no tax from them at all. And we're just sitting on odd pieces that we should have moved them out long ago. I don't know why we wouldn't.
Yeah. I think Alderman this year now, his argument was, we might be able to sell it for Walmart or something.
For Walmart?
So the guy came here for some account, and wants, said what he wanted, was a place for a car right on the edge of that, by that aisle, and no one can do that because for a car right on the edge of that, by that aisle, and no one can do that, because commercial property.
Yeah. And, you know, I mean, we, just to add to that, we are looking, when I said we were looking at property lots that we can sell to help close the revenue gap and put them back on the tax rolls, also helping with the parking issues. We've got a whole list of them, and Chet has a map that he printed out, I can show you in the other room when we're done. There's quite a few of them, and they're different sizes, but a lot of them are just those little skinny lots, enough for a garage or parking space. And we're looking at perhaps doing an auction and inviting everybody who wants to come and bid on them or whatever, might be the way to go. That way, it feels fair that everybody has a chance to know what's going on. But in years past, lots, and even Regerio's, was sold without going out, and they came to the city and the city approved it, and they sold Regerio's lot for a dollar.
Right.
Right? So every administration probably looks at things differently. I think that they're not very efficient if they're not earning us at least some tax money, you know, by just sitting there doing nothing. So.
That was a lot of commercial property.
Yeah.
I mean, the commercial property would be the Ivy Gardens, right?
Right.
So that would be part of the Ivy Gardens.
Yeah. Well, it.
No, no, what I'm saying, either it's Ivy Gardens, the people want to buy that to make their own parking lot for.
For their tenants.
Which is murder of the commercial property.
Yeah. Because we have just so many, you know, we've got Yallowitz, a few spots there, so it would mirror that, you know. So it's in the, it's just across the way, actually, so. Any other discussion? Ready for a vote?
Lyon?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Ruffing?
Yes.
Marhaber?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenetti?
Yes.
Okay. And these two, we have them in two separate resolutions. We're going to combine those into one. Makes sense, so we don't have to vote on both of them. If everyone is okay with that? She had one resolution for one and another resolution for the second one. Their letter of intent to purchase, it has both of them in the same letter, so I think we can consolidate that. Okay. The next one would be Resolution 33 for the construction contract award, technical services. Basically, this is the Smith Street, Smith Creek, or Burwell Street, Smith Creek culvert replacement, or otherwise known as Bassett Hospital area. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Chet, do you want to lead this one out?
Sure. So the, this is Bassett Hospital parking lot, where Smith Creek collapsed, and we've been talking about it for a while. We put the project down to bid, this is replacement of the culvert, elevating that culvert as a cost-saving measure as well. Replacing the culvert to the Bassett Hospital parking lot and up past the care center on the right-hand side, as you're looking north, connecting to where DPW stopped years ago with replacing the Smith Creek. So it'll be a holding site right underneath Burwell Street, and I did reach out to DOT as well, and this is a project that could be 100% funded under our chip state charter agreement.
Which is great. And so this is the contract award on this one?
Correct. So this is contract award, and the low bidder was Keller &amp; Sons Construction for $1,41,143.
Did we ban for that before, for this project?
It was banned before, and then we elected to, we did not run out to bid, we ended up on a major redesign for some cost savings, it was going to be close to $2 million initially, sat on it for a while, winter came, and here we are.
Okay. Sounds good. And then the very next one is Resolution 34. And so, anyway, we need a vote on this, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Any questions? Any other discussion on this one? Anything? So, roll call vote?
Lyon?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Ruffing?
Yes.
Marhaber?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenetti?
Yes.
Okay. And then Resolution Number 34 is for the same project area. This is an increase in the consulting fees. And do I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Chet, again, do you want to describe this one for us?
Sure. So this is the CT Mail Association, who has the engineering record for getting the plans out to bid. The contract that we have with them is just to bid face services, so their contract stopped really with bidding this project. So now the next phase is bringing them in throughout the construction. I did ask that they have somebody there full-time for this one. It's going to be fairly quick project once it starts, but it's a pretty technical project. It's a deep excavation, there's sheeting and shoring, and then also the difficulty with going into the intersection of Burwell Street. So this is something where we want somebody there full-time, and also as a DOT project, that's something we typically encourage. So this contract is, before this change order, up to bid was $105,450. The change in contract price for this change, change order is $153,240, which brings the total contract to $258,690. So it's less, it's just over $10,000 contract, so it's about 25%, 24%.
How far are they from the emergency?
It is so, you know where the sinkhole is in the parking lot? If you were standing there, looking, looking north, and then through the intersection into the upper corner, fire corner of the clinic, so not right in front of the entrance.
Well, it's not the road section, it's the sidewalk section, you can think of.
Well, it'd be right through the center, right to the main intersection.
Right.
Yeah. So we did, Bassett Hospital was there before pre-bid meeting, and also I have a follow-up call with them tomorrow afternoon to work out the coordination of this project, to make sure that they have, they have their regulatory agencies they need to report to for these changes during construction, and also they have site security issues, who want to make sure our.
Signage should be to the hospital.
Signage, but emergency services know, and also they're in the Department of Health.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Okay. Roll call vote?
Lyon?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Ruffing?
Yes.
Marhaber?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenetti?
Yes.
Okay. And the next one is Resolution 35 for technical services contract for Spruce Lake Dam rehabilitation project and lower reservoir and distribution reservoir dams, environmental, I guess, EA updates. This is with GHD. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. This is one too, that Chet, you can probably explain. We, these are mandated investigations and assessments that have been going on for a while. We have escaped as long as we can by not doing them, and begged for mercy because of the financial situation, and we can go no further. So I'll let Chet explain beyond that what these are about.
So in the past, even before the contract here in the city, we've had GHD as the engineering assessment, and the water chest, there's two contracts here, one is for the engineering assessment from EA for both of these dams. It is a required New York State PEC, required documents to have, but also required to be updated over 10 years. We're at the 10-year mark for the upper and lower reservoir dams, at the water treatment plant, and also Spruce Lake Dam. So we have three EAs to be updated. Additionally, this is for the next step of Spruce Lake Dam. So in the past, we have, we've certainly kicked this down the road a while. The DEC is requiring us to make updates to the dam by 2027. This is getting us on the road to getting the plans ready for those updates, and then chasing funding. But this also includes an EA for Spruce Lake Dam as well. So EA is the first step for Spruce Lake, and then Phase Two, and the proposal is getting those drawings ready to put out to bid and for funding. So three EAs and plans for Spruce Lake.
Yeah. And Spruce Lake is important to us because it is in the plan for the water treatment distribution, being able to open up Spruce Lake water, get rid of the tannins, the whole, we've got a lot going on with the idea of opening up that water source as a second primary source of water for us. It's a great backup for our own needs, but when you look at the potential of that dam and for a variety of things, even for hydroelectric, microhydro, there's a lot of things that are important to the future of the city, to have that water source. Any discussion?
Yeah, they want you to repair it, or increase it, or anything like that?
No, so for Spruce Lake, this is just Spruce Lake?
Yeah.
Spruce Lake Dam, the requirement of DEC is essentially to make repairs to the dam, replace the valves at the dam which don't work, and then also to increase the capacity of the spillway. So, so overall, rehab of the dam, not raising it, not lowering it, so rehab of the dam, increasing spillway capacity.
So a lot of it has been, for a while, we've done feasibility studies, we've kind of kicked.
They've done quite a bit.
Yeah, for years and years, and so they're, they've lost.
We didn't have any.
They've kind of lost patience with us, so we, we've got to do the bare minimum, and this will get us started. Let's see what we have here. Any other discussion on this? Okay. Roll call?
Lyon?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Ruffing?
Yes.
Marhaber?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenetti?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution Number 36 is a resolution for a ban to allow the, actually, it's allowing our treasurer here to go out and solicit rates for a ban covering the emergency water issues that we have with water distribution. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? We're looking at, if you look at the background there, we have right around $6 million is what the total looks like so far, on making the initial pass-through to Phase One on water treatment, fixing the filtration system, testing out the membrane system, putting all of that in place, so we have a backup. This is what we were talking about at the last meeting, about the fact that we're very concerned with water and snow melting and everything during the spring, that this is going to be upon us very quickly. And we are working overtime with our current system, and it can only have, it can only manage a certain capacity a day now. And we have no way of pulling it offline to be able to repair, clean, do anything. So we're very vulnerable. So this is what it's going to cost in Phase One, this is what we're looking at. We, we actually broke Phase One down into three sections. The first phase would be beginning in April, the second phase in May, and then the third phase would be about August timeframe. So there's a lot involved in it, but, you know, this is pretty much where we stand right now, we have to move forward with this. Chet, can you explain some of the grants that we'll be looking at to offset the cost of this?
Sure. So I took a look at the expression, you know, when you have a traffic in the water van, and the mayor said you have about $6.1 million on the list. So some of these could not, the program will fund some of these, although there's still maybe opportunities for grants. But by and large, just taking a quick wholesale look, I think that we could fund, our funding target would be of $3.25 billion, $3.25 billion of this, I think, is reasonable to look for reimbursement from state grants. The other side, an extra piece that doesn't have a grant program specifically targeted for, I think that's an opportunity where we could look at congressional direct spending, which used to be the, they changed the name, essentially the same. So I think $3.25 is a reasonable target to be backfunded. And so it would be the LEA grant, water infrastructure grant, your DEC would be the first one to approach, applications would do at the end of May, and it does backfund for work completed to October of the previous year. So if we applied this May, awards are typically the end of the year, December, but it backfunds the work that you've completed to a previous October. So considering that, I think the best way to do is $3.25 plus some credit.
Yeah, they're still, they're still coming up with some ideas for us, other sources, so Chet put them to work on that about a week ago, to help us out, what else can we go after, to make this a little easier for us. And also, we should be getting priority on all these grants because we have an emergency going on.
Right. So I did reach out to DOH, waiting for their response. They were at a kickoff meeting, we had the water treatment plan last week, and one of their funding specialists was there as well, so anticipating the email from, laying out some other possible opportunities that I might have missed, so we certainly have to give their attention.
In that meeting, you had six people from Albany, from the state, concerned and interested in what could we do, so it was a big meeting.
Twenty-one people in total there, six from Albany, and then a couple of local DOHs as well as DEC.
Yeah. So interesting. Any other questions, comments on this one? Okay. Can we get a roll call vote?
Lyon?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Ruffing?
Yes.
Marhaber?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenetti?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any new business to talk about? Okay. Any old business?
Yes. I wanted to make a motion for the discussion on the DRI project on Main Street.
Okay.
Give me a second.
Sure.
To all start the discussion, I'm open on first order as part of that that's on this Main Street. As a result, I've had a large portion of constituents asking me for updates on the project, whether it's business owners or just people. So I've always directed them to the project report that Chet has provided and been updating. I looked at the report myself and noticed that the agreement states we're supposed to break ground on July of this year. I'm open to having this assumption corrected, but I suspect that we're nowhere near reaching that deadline. The project report also states that the project has not yet started and is identified as an EDA urgency. For anybody who doesn't know, this is a $3.2 million project awarded to us through the Downtown Revitalization Initiative from the state of New York. It does include reconstruction of Main Street, U.C. All 5, as well as the design of a sidewalk canopy. I fear we failed to meet this deadline due to the optics of the city and the United States, especially at a time when the city is not financially secure. I don't feel that we can afford to mismanage any contracts or leave a single plan comfortable. I believe that doing so would send a message to the state that we are not ready or willing to accept their support, and I believe that we should increase the level of urgency on the move forward with this project to make our best efforts to show progress on it for July of this year. If possible, I would like Chet or city engineers to elaborate on the project, let us know what barriers there are going to be forward, and to correct any misunderstandings that I might have made, and to let us know how this council can support progress.
Before I have Chet respond, I'd like to share with you that I, in every single meeting, have given an update on the DRI, and especially the downtown, so the assumptions you have are incorrect.
So is there progress being made on that project?
No. The progress, we had asked the state to give us some leeway, to give us a year or so to be able to get the funding. There is no $10,000, $10 million that comes to our hands, right? There's no check that's written to us. We have to spend the money out of our own pocket first and ban for it, and then we start doing the project. So they have been gracious enough to, and we meet with them every quarter, they've been gracious enough to allow us a little bit of time. So from signing the contract, we have five years to start. So this, and in fact, I have it in my mayor's notes right now to even give you an additional update, we have been working on trying to survive as a city first. The downtown, there's no one who loves the DRI better than me, because I was intimately The downtown, there's no one who loves the DRI better than me, because I was intimately involved in it in the very beginning, as you know. So was Chat. But the reality is taking three point, banning for $3.2 million right now is not a red alert emergency when I have 6 million of emergency water that I have to contend with, and other infrastructures, holes in the street over there at Bassett and things like that. So we haven't forgotten about it. But it does not include, it does not include City Hall. It includes the canopy and streetscaping on Main Street.
The project states that it is Main Street reconstruction from City Hall to Route Five. It doesn't include-
Oh, not City Hall, okay. So I'll let Chat elaborate further on the details of the project, because when the LPC did it, it changed from when I initially pulled it together.
Yes, this was originally two projects that were joined into one.
Okay. So, but no one's forgotten about it at all. I mean, we are living in a time right now, the city, that we have to be realistic. Sealy Promenade is another one that we have. We got two projects, two projects out of that. The downtown improvement one, the small grant, the $600,000, is well underway. But the bigger one, we can't, we have just so much, if you think of your credit card, you have so much bandwidth to borrow against.
And I would like to-
And, of course. Go ahead, Chat.
So yes, the current timeline for that is breaking around this summer. We won't meet that at this point. We haven't progressed the project. Our next step would really be to look for a consultant to come on board. And I think the best we can hope for is design this summer. It's too late. It's too late to start a design now and get it into construction this year. You can move forward with RFQs would be the first step to pick a consultant and bring somebody on board.
What can the council do to at least show that we are making progress on it? Because that's my main concern, is just the optics of what it looks like if the state says you were supposed to do this by that date, what progress are we making with that?
Oh, no, the-
So I would like to be able to move forward, at least to a point where we can say to the state, we are making our best efforts. We know, you know, we've gotten to the point where it becomes us spending money. Like, I want to get right to that, that point where we're-
But Tim, over and over and over again, I've gone over this over the past year, exactly where we stand with it, the fact that we can't ban for this right now. There's nothing more we can do. I talk about the DRI. I talk about the home grant. I talk about every one of them in every single meeting that we've had. If people are not listening, I don't know what to tell them. I've also been on podcasts talking about it and the reality. We are wanting, in the spring, what we had planned to do was to open it up for some, getting the community back together engagement. There were several things in that initial plan that people did not like. One of them was diagonal parking. They did not like it. The other one was this barricade going down Main Street that didn't make any sense, because how would you get a plow through? The other one was, what am I missing here? The- But there's several, just a second.
No, I would like to make a point of order, because you have been taking the form when it is not your right to do so.
I'm president of this body.
I, we follow our rules in this establishment, and I had your floor and gave to Chat for a question. So Chat had the floor. You have been writing down three times and not followed the rules.
I think I've been very patient while you've read your-
I do have been polite, and I have been polite in return, but I do want to keep your-
I'm happy for you to, I'm happy for you to continue instead of talking over me. I'm happy for you to continue.
We've all been on this interrupting, following our great order. That's what's happening right now.
Okay. I thought you wanted answers. You want to pontificate or show for the camera.
No, I want answers from the person that I asked the question to. I don't mind you to interject or speak.
And I think that Chat gave you the answers.
Chat, maybe you could help me a little bit on that. We're going to be squeezed to replace lead water lines by the federal government, okay?
Right.
Okay, so if we were to go ahead and start a project and say, new sidewalks, new road, and then say in a year and a half, two years, we have to go back and start laying copper line in Brown, now you've got to tear up brand new sidewalks and a brand new road. I would rather wait and do the project on Main Street after we go through and tear up the old stuff to lay the new copper line. Why spend the money on new stuff when we only have to tear it up a couple of years later? As you said, Chat, we're probably about a year out.
We're in search for funding this year. This is our term to apply for lead service line replacements. So we would have that funding next year.
So that could be like our model, once we get to it, that could be our first place to start laying copper and whatever, whatever federal government sets that we're required to do in the beginning. So that could be your model, from City Hall down to, down to Legion.
Right.
And once you put new sidewalks over, that's complete underneath. The federal government is happy what we did in Brown, and everybody's going to be happy to re-roll the site. But you're only going to be, you're going to be wasting a lot of money by putting new stuff down, tearing it all back up, then putting stuff down.
And to respond, I'm not suggesting that we break ground on this project right away. I intend, there are things that may postpone the project, and rightfully so. I think that is valid reason to do so. It does make sense to lay down new sidewalks and that, right? What I am suggesting is that we prioritize whatever progress we can make on the project to show the state, to the state that we are still committed to this project and that we have it on the ball. I feel like leaving it in not started and medium priority is telling the state, we don't care about this. You've given us open awards for money, and we're just going to not manage it. I want to raise the priority. That's all I'm asking is to raise it from medium priority to something higher. Not a surge, just raise the priority and get some progress on this project so that we can show to the state, yes, it is a longer deadline than we have initiated or anticipated. However, we are still doing what we can. I think there are steps that can be made that don't come to the point of borrowing money or breaking ground. I think that we can make progress on paper that we can show to the state that we have done that.
Chat, can you address this? Because clearly, I don't want to interrupt again with how many meetings we have with the state and how the state is comfortable with where we are.
We do have quarterly meetings, quarterly state meetings. We have talked over delaying the projects. They have, until last time Danny, Danny Lafferty from the Department of State said that he was going to come out and meet with us. We haven't got to that point yet, but state is aware that we would like to delay.
And so when I originally, the question I had asked you was, what can the council do to raise the urgency or support progress, whatever that may be, to show the state that we are making progress?
I think the first step is to, is to bring somebody out and start the design of the project or the public input sessions. I mean, that's, that would be the first thing to do.
And so what would be the requirement for us to begin that stage now?
It's a matter of putting it out and scheduling the time. It's very simple. And that's what I was talking about in my mayor comments that I haven't gotten to yet, that that is one of the things that Chat and I have been talking about. Let's get the community engaged again so that we can iron out the things that they're not happy about. The other one is even the canopy itself. Some people love the idea. Some people don't like the idea. Let's bring it back. Let's really get some good information from the public so that when we do design and we get to that point, you know, we will be able to have a clearer vision. So the first renderings that came up, just like any renderings, you know, they're not exact. We had one rendering that had a bunch of goats on the, entered to the tunnel down there. And we're trying to figure out what is that, you know? And the guy from Argentina did it, and they had goats around there. So that seemed to be a normal thing to do. They had the barricade coming down Main Street. That didn't make any sense for people when you were living in this part of the country, that you have snow removal. So you can't have anything permanent, but you can paint the sidewalk or the road, just like what they do in Utica. That's the bike lane. So there's some, a lot of discussion and a lot of things. We want to be able to dust it off and make sure that the community is having enough input in this now that we're looking at starting it. But it is, it really was delayed for financial reasons. And we talked to them in the meetings, Chat's in there, and we go back and forth, and we stay in touch with Danny and all. The fact that you don't hear about every single meeting doesn't mean that progress isn't being made. And maybe it's more a communication problem or people aren't listening, but we really do stay in touch with them. And they understand our situation. And because of the financial situation that we're in, they are more than accommodating. So we're not in the doghouse with the state in any way, or they feel that we're lacking progress. They would love for us to be able to jump in and do more and more quickly, but they seem to be pretty happy when we talked about, you know, getting the community back together, some place where we can put some easels up and renderings and let everybody come through and make comments.
Could the council approve going forward to get designs and doing that? Is that I'd like?
Well, it's an operational thing. I don't know if it's anything the council, council works with appropriations and laws. I'm not sure if they, if council would like to vote on it. They can, I'm happy for it. But it really comes into an operational thing, which is under my helm.
I would like to submit a motion to have the council approve to enable the city to make a RFQ to just start the design process.
We would, okay. I don't think we're there yet.
Yeah, I understand you want to increase this. My concern is the control of the saying that we are in so much debt that we can't, we can't afford all of that. How do we move forward with a project that is really an elected project? There's no requirement. It's not, Main Street is, unless I can use updating, but this is not a requirement. We have buildings that don't have heat. We have a building that's falling. The walls are falling in. We have all these issues, the water issue, and we're looking at a $430,000 deficit. And just to beat this budget, I just don't understand, I don't know how, can you explain to me how that urgency would take to spread?
So, excuse me, point of order. You made a motion, nobody's seconded it. We should need to discuss this.
True.
That's a point of order.
Yeah. I would need a second on the motion that I made, or there will be a second.
Do we have a second?
If you're going to, if you're going to go forward, do we have a second? Second? You want a second?
His motion was to go after a bid on RFQ.
I think this time, what we need to do, and I think Danny, both of the government meeting with you down there, when they went through all this, I remember, remember? And you didn't know half the people in the room that are going to make decisions for the city. We didn't know a couple of local people. So if you're going to go ahead and make all these motions and start a project and discuss what you'd like on Main Street, I think we should go, somebody should go knock on all the business owners' doors and bring them into this. Their everyone's at, are going to look at Main Street every day of their life. They're all sort of business owners on Main Street, right? Their most important people on Main Street are businesses. You got to let them get involved. You got to let them have a say. They didn't have a say the last time, over the last year. So that's very-
So we don't have a second?
Yes, he did second.
Oh, he did second. Okay.
Look, we had those community meetings, and we all saw the renderings. And we all, I mean, we had two or three of those city meetings where we had the renderings and the drawings and the ideas, and that we all voted on, and we all, not even really voted on, but we made recommendations of what we liked and didn't like. I want to go back to the point of communication with the state. If we're communicating with the state every quarter about our status on this, and they're satisfied with the status that we're currently giving them, knowing that we are not in the kind of financial condition that we can make these runs right now and do a BAN to get it going, I'm not sure what good it's going to do us to get the process going. And then a year or two down the lane, we have to do something different because it's a year or two down the road. Things change fast in a lot of circumstances. And if we step into it and start moving with some progress, which I, we all want the progress. We all, we all love the DRI. It's a great idea. We know Main Street needs a lot of help, but we can't give it the help that it needs right now, it appears. So if we start this process and then get everybody rolling and then renderings and just like we did before, and then it just goes nowhere for another year or two until we're financially able to do the BAN and get to the point where we can get the financing so we can get reimbursement from the state, I don't know if that's going to do us any good. I don't think that's going to do us any good. Things could change. I think Chat probably attests to that. That's the only constant is change. You know, another year or two down the road, and even our, Carpanetti was mentioning about the water service. Something as simple as that could just rip these projects to shreds. We all want to see some progress on it, but right now, the progress just has to be stunted as long as the state goes along with it, is not going to pull the funding. I think that's the most important consideration that we can see in going down the road. Do I want to see the funding, you guys? Absolutely, I want to see the funding.
Well, the funding doesn't get utilized until we spend the money first and get reimbursed. So it's not, it's not what people think. People think always it's a $10 million check. That's not what it is. It's a reimbursable grant.
It's not like the bank building project where they were going to come in and that was going to be their money, that was going to be upfront on that, and to get the $2.4 that we have.
That was a private project, right.
It's different from that.
It is.
The Main Street project is our project, and it's our money that we have to put up the first front to get it done and then get reimbursed.
Right.
We don't have the money to pay the financing on that BAN for $3 million for two or three years that it's going to take to complete that project at this time. We've got to get our ducks in a row a little better, and then hopefully with a year or two, we can set this into motion. These, these projects, they weren't meant to jump into, you know, I mean, in six months or a year, even two years. They are five-year projects. You go down to the other communities who had DRIs, and they were five to seven-year projects that were allowed by the state because of financial and fiscal conditions, so.
To respond, so I agree that if the state were saying, we are okay with where you're at, then that's different.
Right.
From where, what I've heard, we have requested that and gotten no response yet.
From?
From the state. We have made a request to have a, the project timeline postponed, but that has not yet been approved. We're still waiting on a response.
No, they've approved everything we've asked them for, right? Is there something hanging out that we've asked?
They've taken it, given us a verbal understanding. We don't have a contract extension yet, though.
No. And so the contract extension, whether they give us that or not, we're still within our five years, so we've got time. But as far as we even, we send notification part of the contract is, we have to end writing, talk about the status, and send that in. That's quarterly, too. We have our phone call. That's quarterly. And we go through all of what we're doing and all. Anything that they're requiring of us or would like to see of us, you know, we certainly provide it. I don't know where you would hear anything different, because that's the reality.
We just, a moment, a moment ago, during the discussion, we, somebody had mentioned that there was a request for a meeting that we're still waiting on response for to-
No.
Change the timeline.
Not that I heard.
Did I not hear that correctly? Talking about, we asked the state, Danny, Danny was going to come to Little Falls.
Oh, a meeting for a visit, site visit. Danny was going to come and have face-to-face instead of over the Zoom call. But yeah, we haven't scheduled that yet. We can schedule at any time. But it's really Danny's convenience when he wants to come. But there's no decision or anything being made that we're waiting for him to come so we can make a decision. We talk about it and make decisions over the phone and in writing all the time with DRI.
I'm happy to make motion table this discussion, then.
Okay. Any comments? Second? Okay. Okay. I'm going to move on then to mayor's comments.
Oh, can I just make one brief comment?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Can I just make one brief comment?
Sure.
In the past month, my ward has lost a couple of prominent citizens, rocks around, proud member of this body, proud member of this city and community. proud member of this body, a proud member of this city and community, born and raised here, their father raised, had a market on the south side. John Scaron, again, always busy, always prominent in the community, born and raised here, raised his family here, worked on the planning boards and other organizations to help this city. I just wanted, I didn't want to get by without mentioning that, you know, these are the kind of citizens that we hope we are and we become, you know, to raise our families here and to spend our time here, and it is a great city, and I love this city. I was born in Hurcrum, but I love this city, I've been in the city for 38 years, and I hope people say nice things about me after I'm gone, and, you know, that I was a proud member of this city and a proud member, just like Roxton Ron and John Scaron.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, because we did fly the flags at half-staff for Rocco, because he was one of our aldermen, and, you know, he, he loved the city. There's no question about it. Anything else? Any, any other comments from the floor? Nothing? Okay. I'm going to start with our cash position, which I do every meeting. Today, we're at $880,320 in the general fund, water fund, and sewer fund, plus we have in our squirrel away fund, another $884,975. It's kind of interesting that it's almost equal. We currently have about $82,090 in our 60-day payments, we have $90,000 in our essentials, and a total outstanding invoices of $270,499. Other notes is, we're, one of the things that we're expecting is about $400,000 at the end of this month for the county for unpaid 2024 taxes, city taxes, which will be welcome to that, the checking account, because it's getting low. Since January 1st, we've had invoices from Cargill totaling $73,653 and more coming for salt alone. That's what this season has done to us. It's unbelievable. Many of the towns around us have run out of salt, and they just can't buy it, so it's been a really hard winter for everyone. Also, I wanted to mention, anyone with past due water, sewer codes, bills paid, they need to be paid by April to avoid going to be re-levied by the county onto your 2025 taxes. First, DRI check has been received, that is in the smaller downtown grant, the improvement, downtown improvement, I think they call it, we used to call it the sod improvement, and that is going, that money is associated with a project on West Main with what used to be Ed and Bud's, and is now Lock 17. So, we're happy that they're underway with their roofing, they've got HVAC is another part of their plan to go forward. So, first one to get moving on, we're excited about that. We also are looking at asking the state if we can, on some of the buildings on East Main, rather than capital expenditures and capital improvements, we're looking at FFEs, which would be fixtures, furniture, and equipment. So, someone like, for instance, the sporting goods store that's going in would be able to apply for something like that, so they're not going to tear apart a building, but as someone who is a tenant of the building, this might be helpful to them. So, that's to, coming soon, so we're, and we requested it through Jim Thatcher, who works as our grant writer for that particular grant. The other thing is, we are moving into a time where we're very lean on things as far as expenditures and what we have in the bank, and so we may have to go longer than 60 days, we're hoping not, but until we get through the next two to three months, it's going to be really, really tight. So, just be aware of it if people are talking to you, we're, we're trying. We're, anything that is essential, we're putting ahead of the pack, but times are really tough right now. Homes grant, we just finished, and I think most of you are familiar with the homes grant through Urban Renewal, they do the administering, administering of that grant. We've had lots and lots of good comments from the state, they love how we're moving through that. We have just a small portion of that left in the 24 grant, and then we're moving on to the 25. So, if you know anybody who might benefit from that grant, we'd love to know about them, so if they have an interest, make sure they talk to Mark Veen at Urban Renewal. We're also, we're allowed to go to a greater dollar amount this year as a result of how quickly we're moving through the grant and the performance that we've had with the contractors that we've selected. So, we're moving it up from the $400,000 to $500,000 this year. We have the ability to go to a million, but we thought we'd conservatively take the next baby step in that direction. So, that will help more low-income and senior residents, it's really where the bulk of it goes to. DRI, we're working through our Main Street Improvement Grant, the 600,000, which we talked about before, and so it's not just including capital projects, but the FFEs too. Hopefully, they'll, they'll approve that for us, the letter is already out to them. Our Sealy Promenade is on hold, waiting for the sky bridge construction of Relock 17 to get underway. Once all of their heavy equipment is moved off of the area where they're not going to be using the Sealy Street Promenade area, then we'll start working with our contractors and moving that project forward. It's not as expensive a project as the ma, big Main Street one, but it's very doable, and we're excited about being able to get that one started pretty quickly. The, we're working with Canal Corporation to dovetail what they're doing for the Lock 17, the sky bridge, or they call it the connector bridge, and what our DRI Promenade, streetscaping and whatnot, will match up to it. So, that's pretty exciting. Main Street Canopy here, project has been put on hold basically for financial, our financial situation, but I do plan on some public meetings in the meantime to talk about the canopy, diagonal parking, and streetscaping. So, that's all I had. Anything else from anyone? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion, second.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.